Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the October 23rd, 2025 council meeting. It's a pleasure to have each and every one of you with us this evening. Sinead, do we have any service announcements?
No, sir.
Okay, then if you would please stand. Our invocation this evening will be given by Shahana Kenya Penn from the Spiritual Assembly of the Baha's in Irving.
O thou kind Lord, thou hast created all humanity from the same stock. Thou hast decreed that all shall belong to the same household. In thy holy presence, they are all thy servants, and all mankind are sheltered beneath thy tabernacle. All have gathered together at thy table of bounty. All are illumined through the light of thy providence. O God, thou art kind to all; thou hast provided for all, dost shelter all, confers life upon all. Thou hast endowed each and all with talents and faculties, and all are submerged in the ocean of thy mercy. O thou kind Lord, unite all. Let the religions agree and make the nations one, so that they may see each other as one family, and the whole earth as one home. May they all live together in perfect harmony. O God, raise aloft the banner of the oneness of mankind. O God, establish the most great peace. Cement thou, O God, the hearts together. O thou kind Father God, gladden our hearts through the fragrance of thy love. Brighten our eyes through the light of thy guidance. Delight our ears with the melody of thy word, and shelter us all in the stronghold of thy providence. Thou art the mighty and powerful, thou art the forgiving, and thou art the one who overlooketh the shortcomings of all mankind.
Thank you. If you'd please remain standing. Mayor Portem Black will lead us in the pledges.
Please hand it over your heart, and please recite the pledges with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, John. The next item on the agenda is the public comments. Sinead, do we have residents who wish to speak this evening?
Yes, we do have quite a few, so I'd ask you to respectfully, when I tell you it's three minutes, to abide by the three-minute rule. Public comments provides the opportunity to our citizens to address the council on items that are not listed on the regular agenda. The council will listen, but they will not respond as they are restricted from deliberation by the Texas Open Meeting Act. While the mayor and council may not respond, you're welcome to contact them directly. Their phone numbers and emails are listed on the website, and a meeting can be requested. If your comments require response, the follow-up will be handled by the communications team. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes, and I will let you know when one minute is left. Please state your name and address prior to your comments. A professional presentation is requested. Any handouts you wish to provide to the council members should be given to the police officers on either side of the chambers. Please do not approach the dais. Our first speaker is Mr. Anthony Bond, followed by Maxwell Little.
Tonight, Dennis said I only have one minute.
Do I?
Dennis said I only have one minute, but I'm gonna take three.
You've got three minutes.
Anthony Bond, 4109 West Northgate, number 821. First, I want to give kudos to our illustrious Irving Fire Chief Victor Conley. Most people don't know it yet, but he's been inducted into the Texas Fire Chiefs Hall of Fame. I think he will be actually, the ceremony, I think he told me, will be in December. He's an example of Irving, one of the greatest examples of service to the city of Irving since I've lived here. He's served for over half of his life. Thank you, Irving Fire Chief Victor Conley, and I love you dearly, and you deserve it. I want to talk to you, I wanted to talk about three things, but I don't think I'm having enough time, so I'm gonna talk about the one that is, two of them really bother me if I have time. The first one is ICE. ICE is here in Irving, Texas, and people are afraid to even say ICE. ICE is not supposed to be a punishment tool. It's called immigration and customer imprisonment. They've become punishers. They've become tyrants. They've become a terroristic organization, in my opinion. And they're here in Irving, Texas. They tell me there's a little African-American schoolgirl that's running around Irving, calling ICE is coming. Reminds me of Paul Verhoeven saying, "The British are coming." We should not use our government, any form of our government, to terrorize our people, to terrorize our citizens, our cities, our counties, our states, and our nation. And there's a lot of little kids going to bed at night.
One minute.
Forty-three percent of our population here in Irving is Latino. That's over 110,000 people of the 257,000 people that live here in Irving. That's a lot of people, and they're living in fear. I'm gonna ask the city council tonight, y'all need to, I've talked to our county commissioner, our state representative, I've talked to pastors of all different faiths, I've talked to our school district, and we need to come together as a community and have an informational meeting, and just simply say to our folks that are living in fear, we do not want you to continue to live in fear. We do not want your children to come to fear, come home, and their mom and daddy might not be there. That's all I'm about to say.
Three minutes. Thank you, Anthony. Next, Maxwell Little, followed by Aaron Perdue.
Good evening, City Council. I hope you guys are doing well. My name is Maxwell Little. I'm a resident of Meadowbrook Heights. Wanted to say a couple of words about the Army Porter's Armor Navy Store. I walked in there three days ago, and the lady told me that they hadn't had any single customers in the last week, and it's been really dead. It's a small business. I'm a resident of Irving. I think it's time that we help this business not close, but stay open. And I think it's, there's a lot of military people that go to that store. A lot of police officers from Irving go to that store. And so I had on my heart from my Jesus told me that we need to help them out. They've had some trouble paying their electric bill, so I think it's really a problem that we support Porter's Army-Navy Store. Also, last month, September, I'm sorry, it's October, in October of 2022, at approximately 10:00 PM, Carrollton Police lost an officer for the first time in their history. Steve Nutham served his city well. He was a Marine. He was also a Captain America fan. IT, can you put the picture up, please? He is a Captain America fan, so I did this, Home Depot helped me with this. It's in the watch, 10/18/22. It was with Carrollton PD. His badge number is 1070, and he was a Marine. How much time do I have left?
Minute nineteen.
With a minute nineteen left, I would ask for everybody to be in a moment of silence and honor of Steve Nutham. Thank you. Thank you to Irving PD, to the city council. May we always be blessed with people that sacrifice their own life, as it says in John 15 or 13, brother lays down his last first friend. Yes, take care of yourself. Thank you.
Aaron Perdue, followed by Michael Burney.
Hi, my name is Aaron Perdue. I live at 2001 Meadowlark here in Irving. Lived here since I was a year old. I watched a lot of changes in Irving. I was very dismayed when I learned about the recent pornographic materials, sexually explicit books that have been found in our Irving library. Vicki Norman has been very diligent in exploring this. We found books that are actually against the Texas Penal Code, and so we're trying to do something about getting these out of the library, not just out of the children's section, which is the worst part of it. These books were supposed to be, have been taken out of the children's section completely, moved to the adult section. Instead, they were put to an area called YA for young adult, and this library's definition of young adult is 11 to 17. I'm a wife and a mother and a grandmother, and I'm sorry, but 11 to 17, those are children. Eighteen to 22, maybe, that would qualify as young adult, but I'm sorry. Whoever is reviewing these books, and I say that lightly, needs to do it again. Our children are being neglected and exposed to the wrong kinds of things. We cannot leave the future of our children to something so delicate as what they read in the library, or they should not feel safe to come here, if the library's not going to do something about this. One example of our library's lack of diligence is when our library director said that as an excuse for not adequately censoring these gross books, no one knows what explicit means. Okay, is she really saying that the Irving residents are too dumb to know what the word means or look it up? According to the Oxford Languages Dictionary, explicit means stated clearly and in detail, leaving no room for confusion or doubt. Therefore, sexually explicit books state or show clearly what is meant by this term, including graphic pictures portraying sexual conduct which no child needs to see. We need to change the way that we review books that come into this library, and we need to take out the bad ones.
One minute.
Vicki Norman had a question. If Irving Independent School District librarians can define obscenity by the law and go by the Texas Penal Code, why can't our city attorney and public library leadership do so? There are many steps that we need to do and need to take, and I sent this in my email to y'all. Steps that the Arlington Library Director has taken a year and a half ago, we need to follow suit. And my final comment is, we believe you all are in a position of leadership with the city of Irving because of the grace of Almighty God. I would like you to address these issues and adopt a policy similar to the Arlington Library instituted by Directors Norma Zuniga. We ask that you respect our wishes in this matter, as well as those of countless parents in our city, whose goal is to protect the minds and hearts of our precious children. Thank you.
Michael Burney, followed by Vicki Norman.
Michael Burney, 1626 Cooper Drive, Irving, Texas. Michael Burney, 1626 Cooper Drive, Irving, Texas. Gentlemen, we need to talk. Have a good day.
My name is Vicki Norman. I live at 1015 Sleepy Hollow Drive, and of course, I'm addressing the library. And, um, again, um, in talking to leadership of other libraries, they've been able to solve this problem. They've worked with the community, they've implemented changes and measures that we haven't seen accomplished here at all. We've seen resistance from the city management, from the library leadership, and, uh, not moving sexually explicit materials that are not appropriate to minors whatsoever. Every teacher, every librarian, every selector of books in the public school system for the last two years has been taught the Texas Penal Codes, and notwithstanding any explicit materials, they will not have those books in the public lib-, in their private, their school library, or they will not also allow their students to use the ebook system in junior and senior high for our Irving library. So we are excluding all of those 15,000 students, plus the students at private and charter schools, from utilizing the YA, YA+ area of the library, because they know that there are sexually explicit materials in the library, and they're protecting the students. And so we are excluding so many people from utilizing it because of your policy. And, um, if teachers, school librarians, and all of the people there at Irving ISD can understand what the meaning of sexually explicit and Texas Penal Codes are, then why can't our city manager, our city attorney, or our leadership in our library? How is that we do not understand that you do not give graphic pictures and graphic decisions, descriptions of sexual acts to underage kids? Thank you.
Nikita Seal, followed by Karen Bell.
Hi, 130 South Main Street here in Irving. Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. My name is Nikita Seal. I'm the founder and CEO of ZZ's Ice Cream Puffs, a dessert brand known for our warm, Japanese-inspired, sweet buns filled with your choice of ice cream and toppings. The name ZZ's comes from my twins, Zion and Zaya. This isn't just a business, it's a legacy I'm building for them. I'm also a US Air Force veteran. While stationed in Asia, I came across a warm pastry that inspired our concept. Years later, after being laid off during the pandemic, I decided to bring that idea to life here in Texas, turning a tou- tough moment into something joyful. Since then, we've started, as a dream on wheels, has grown into one of North Texas' favorite dessert experiences. We've been voted the top food truck in DFW by Yelp, and we've had the honor of serving some of DFW's sweetest moments, from weddings and corporate events to Irving's own citywide solar eclipse celebration. We've even served clients like the Dallas Cowboys, the Dallas Mavericks, and Toyota. Now, for the first time, we're putting down roots right here in Irving. We were honored to be selected for the Reimagine Irving Initiative, and will soon open our first storefront at 130 South Main Street. Our grand opening is November 6th, and I'd love to personally invite each of you to come out to celebrate with us. As a part of the program, we've been offered a three-month pop-up opportunity, but my goal is to make Irving our long-term home. We're currently working to raise $10,000, the fin- final piece we need to finish our build-out, so, so that we can open on time and keep ours, our doors open beyond the first three months. Having ZZ's here means jobs for local teens, more foot traffic for neighboring businesses, and fun-
One minute.
-family-oriented, uh, destination that brings people together and energizes Main Street. If there are city programs, partnerships, or connections that can help a small minority and veteran-owned business like mine sustain and grow, I'd love to be connected. And if anyone feels led to donate or support our $10,000 goal, your help would directly impact a family legacy and a business that's proud to call Irving home. Thank you for believing in a small business and for helping make the city, this city, a place where dreams, legacy, and community can thrive. And I have some business cards that I would love to hand to an officer to hand out, please.
Okay, Karen Bell, followed by Kimberly Black.
Karen Bell, 704 McCoy Drive, Irving. Parents in Irving, across Texas and the US, are up in arms with the sexual content to children in public libraries. Americans who believe that taxpayer money should not be used to buy and promote sexually explicit material to children are called extremists by some, while those promoting all manner of sexual behavior to children are considered inclusive. Librarians defend the explicit books, calling them sex-positive. The laws call these books obscene and harmful to minors. Intentional ignorance of the state laws protecting children by the city manager, attorney, or library staff is not an excuse. Leadership needs to be held accountable for these books violating state laws. Protecting our children from sexually explicit material isn't controversial, it isn't partisan, it's what our parents expect. Any book, video, or lesson which contains sexually explicit content is entirely unacceptable and has no place in our public libraries. These obscene materials need to be completely removed from our libraries, not moved to another section of the library, nor placed under lock and key. Parents should be able to trust that the books selected by our librarians do not contain pornography, obscene, or sexually explicit material. reinstating sexually explicit books in adult or young adult flies in the face of our duty. This is not about a book ban, nor is it about stifling diverse views on politics, cultural, or social issues. There are hundreds of other age-appropriate books representing diverse viewpoints that do not contain pornography. Why can't those books be included in our public library instead of the pornographic ones? The Lano decision allows the community to say no to these obscene books. Parents, not city bureaucrats or librarians, should have the final say as to what is promoted to children in the public library. Please incorporate the state penal code guidelines in the library collection policy-
One minute.
-require education of all library staff as to the penal codes and what is acceptable to minors. Put in place several layers of personnel in the book selection process to ensure these books do not become part of the collection. Review books when they arrive to ensure they follow policy for the protection of minors. And hold the library leadership accountable as to what is acceptable to minors, and remove obscene material to our children. Thank you.
Kimberly Black, followed by Molly McComall.
Kim Black, 1625 Fair Court, Irving, 75060. I'm speaking to you tonight to propose a change to the City of Irving Code of Ethics regarding campaign contribution limits. Currently, our elections are running in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, which is ridiculous, and prices most citizens of Irving out of running for office. The average Irving household income is $106,542. Irving residents should not have to be independently wealthy to run for office. According to our City of Irving Code of Ethics, our current camp- campaign contribution limits are $10,000 from an individual or a PAC for single-member districts, or $25,000 for mayor or at-large districts. Historically, before the Families for Irving PAC injected so many dollars into our elections, our City of Irving campa-, our City of Irving elections were reasonable. City of Irving residents could run for office for $5,000 or $10,000. That is no longer the case. So, I propose we get back to the ability of all citizens of Irving being able to afford to run for office with the following terms: $1,000 campaign contribution limits for single-member districts from a single individual or a PAC, and a $1,500 campaign contribution limit for at-large and mayor races. We don't need West Texas billionaires choosing the city council members for Irving. Let's make campaigning in Irving affordable again. And finally, PACs should not be created by city council members using other names-
One minute.
-to funnel thousands of dollars into other campaign, into other campaigns by using another name. And I am talking about Councilwoman Kenosa, who in our last election cycle started a PAC under a different last name to funnel money from outside of the city of Irving into one of our elections. That's ridiculous and should not be allowed. So I think we have a lot of work to do on our Code of Ethics. Um, I am going to be, uh, starting a five-member petition committee, and we will be petitioning the city to change this. Thank you, have a nice night.
Molly McComall, followed by Jessica Kane.
Hello, thank you. I'm Molly McComall, and I live in South Irving at a protected address for home and home business. Thank you for this opportunity. I implore you to move in favor of libraries designating materials for minors and designating separate materials for adults with controls, restrictions, and ratings, similar to those used for videos, movies, and other material. As a mental health professional with a school health and safety business, as well as being family and colleague of those in the health and education systems, I hope you will consider the authoritative literature that exists. After being born in North Texas, I moved much before returning to Texas again and to Harris County in my late elementary years. I stayed in the safe suburban turn, excuse me, suburban town until graduating from high school within the same school district I started. While safe, the suburb was not removed from danger. Upon danger occurring to law enforcement families, many churches, organizations, and schools encouraged assertiveness and refusal skills with safeguards at libraries. What was used as the means to an end for the dangerous people to get away with malicious behavior? Graphic material. Family organizations and many people who knew the research began to educate. As youth, we were empowered to thrive, consider a whole health approach, and live vivaciously in purity to safeguard our minor years. In addition to existing parental controls that were recently enacted and mandated by laws for education materials and computers, the Senate hearings to the Committee on the Judiciary for the US Senate and the 108th Congress during first session, September 9th and October 15th, 2003, provided information about the danger to minors and adults. Visually graphic material, especially online material, had the effects of crack cocaine. That has the opposite effect to the brain for libido than one might expect. Similar to healthy food and beverages that give balance and equilibrium, wholesome viewing material with limits and parameters does the same and has better results on the short and long-term effect of libido.
One minute.
Not only does the research indicate the danger of porn by overworking the brain with a drug effect, cortisol levels were reported to change. Please consider this information and the adverse effects listed for healthy living. Please consider the literature that was distributed by NBC News affirming the US Senate for discussing the destruction caused by porn. Please also consider literature by nsexualexploitation.org, yourbrainonporn.com, and thepublicdiscourse.com. We can help families have a safe and healthy experience in libraries. Instead of having the equivalent of a slippery floor for guests to manage, we provide a safe experience to provide the safety upon the arrival into community libraries in accordance with research and health standards. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica Kane, followed by Matilda Mesco.
Good evening. Jessica Kane, Moss Rose Circle. You all know very well that there's harmful, illegal, and sexually explicit materials foisted on children in the Irving public libraries. You've known about this for years. The content is so graphic that it's not permitted to, that we're not permitted to describe or repeat it in public meetings. There are thousands of ways to procure this type of material, should you wish to. The children and young adult section of a public library shouldn't be one. The recent collection modification effort undertaken by the Irving libraries was an expensive sham. Moving sexually explicit, illegal, and harmful materials to a different section that is still accessible by minors is not sufficient. In fact, it comes across as circumventing Texas law in order to distribute these materials to minors. I call on the Irving libraries to fire current library leadership that has continuously sought out harmful and illegal materials. I call on Irving libraries to adopt objective standards that are based on Texas law when selecting, displaying, and promoting materials for minors. Texas Penal Code 4324 would be a good place to start. I call on Irving libraries to conduct a thorough and objective review of the current sexually explicit and illegal materials in the children's and young adult section of the libraries. Thank you.
Matilda Mesco, followed by Jefferson, no, followed by, sorry, Douglas Valencia.
I would like to use this projector, if that's okay? And if there are kids that are under 18, they should probably leave, because I want to, um, show something from a book that was in the teen section.
Ms. Mesco, can you pull the microphone closer to you?
Is this better?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All righty, so I found this rather infamous book now in the library a few weeks ago, about six weeks ago. Um, I checked it out, and I've heard that it has since been moved to the adult section. I'm really thankful for that. However, it's just not good enough, because my question is, what let, what policies led this book to be in the teen section in the first place? I know the library follows, um, what they call trusted reviews, and so I looked up a review for this book. The Kirkus Review, which I guess is a mainstream review, says these things, quote, "There are discussions in this book about emotional readiness, preventing STDs in pregnancy. It's concise and easy to read, with advice that is sex-positive and straightforward. Subjects are briefly but clearly explored in a conversational tone. Illustrations are eye-catching. They lend a fashionable flair to the guide and are refreshingly explicit in their presentations." Okay, sounds really nice, and it's all lies. I'm gonna hit these things point by point. Um, point number one, we're gonna allow a stranger, a vlogger from Madrid, to talk about emotional readiness with our children? Kids don't know if they're ready or not. That's why we have laws. Um, that's why we don't give them the car keys at 12 years old. Point two, this book says very little about consequences. Um, the only thing it says about STDs is use a condom. A simple Google search will tell you that condoms are effective only when used expertly. What teen is gonna use these things expertly? Like, probably not.
One minute.
Point three, illustrations, oh, let's get to them. Eye-catching, they are. I'd like to show, the, at the top, you, you see these- The, at the top, you see these three kids, right? Max, 14, Lara, 14, Paul, 15. We go to the back, and these very kids are shown in sexual activity. Oh, wrong one, there's so many. So, showing 14-year-olds engaged in sex acts, that's got to be against law. It, and, and it can't be right. One of the, this is one of the ones they talk about with refreshingly explicit, like it's not refreshing. There's nothing refreshing about this.
Three minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Douglas Valencia, followed by Jefferson Braga.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to make this real short. We have now for about six years the issue of the obscenity in pornography in the City of Irving Municipal Library. And the obscenity and the pornography constitute vice. Vice has no rights. It is never age-appropriate, and it is always offensive. It is a sole toxic, a sole poison for the common good of the residents of this city. And no one, whether they're five years old or 95 years old, should be exposed to this garbage. I would like to allude very briefly to the spree of mass killings in the United States perpetrated by people who identify as gender dysphoric. And these people were previously exposed to this type of smut, garbage. It's sole poison. It stimulates people to do things that are wrong, and we don't need that violating the common good of our city. The residents don't deserve that. I would like to mention one incident in the library. The library staff itself has identified 230 books that they claim are not for immature readers, and this gets back to that revolutionary canard that the books and the publications are not age-appropriate. And this is nonsense. That garbage is not appropriate for anybody, and much less for children. And yet, this same staff has catalogued these pornographic materials for young adults-
One minute.
...11 to 18. And there's directional notices that if, if you're in the stacks for the children, well, then you can go to the stacks for the young adults. And this is insanity. This is wrong. This is crazy. This is, this is inculcating the wrong things in our young people. All of this constitutes a crime against the common good of the residents of the City of Irving and is a gross betrayal of the taxpayers' confidence in the city's stewardship of its libraries, and it cries out to heaven for a thorough housecleaning and accountability. Thank you very much.
And bring it home, Jefferson Braga.
Something here for it. Is it able to pan out a little bit? I guess the question is, hello, ladies and gentlemen, Jefferson Braga from Etain Road. I'm always, excuse me, I put that there for a reason, so it's, so it's weighted down a little bit. Came here just to, to share a couple points that are there listed on the, on the side. I wanted to thank everybody for supporting us this past month, three months especially. A lot of folks have stopped by, picked up seeds, dropped off at a couple churches and things like that, so that's been good fun, a couple mosques as well. And I'd just like to ask that that continue. You know, we've got a lot more seeding to do, and, I had something on, on this one, sorry. I had a couple things I'd like to, to share. You know, as, as the seeding continues into the fall, I would like us to just consider a couple things, just trees that are, that are nearby, right? They all have these little pods. A lot of the grasses, ornamental grasses that are going to come through are also available. As soon as that yellows out, they all drop, and you've got ornamental grass. If you're curious about it, right, you've got it, you've got it right there on Google Lens. Everybody's got their Google Lens updated with the latest Gemini, right? And that's, that's a little oracle in your pocket. And I just wanted to share that. I also wanted to share another piece with, that I mentioned last time. Let me see, how am I on time? And this is, sorry, where is it? It's not more down. It's, here it is. This is happening quite a bit in, in North Irving, especially around 114. This right here is what we're seeing right down Belt Line as well, where the trees have basically just been poorly maintained, and they will die. It's like two or three years. The mulching right there, and actually, can I slow that down? I apologize.
One minute.
Okay. So, the mulching there on any of those are, are quite poor, okay? What you're going to, what's going to happen is, every one of those trees, okay, and this is me just, you know, just passing by and just holding the phone off the side, okay? No worries. But every one of those trees are basically going to die off and not be very productive, okay? It just needs to be something with the code, something that, you know, that just alerts the HOA, the commercial buildings, they're hiring these folks, and they don't know how to, how to mulch it up. And so, this is revenue that's going to go down, and we can put grants and things like that towards it and do a lot better. Another point I wanted to just share, and this is, this is happening throughout Irving as well, these are things that are just dear to my heart, so thank you, guys, for letting me share. The water, tons of water are stacked at Murphy's, Albertson, any spot that has it. They're stacked outside for the, for the blazing sun all summer long, all winter long, and they get purchased, I guess, in a good, a good deal, but it's like a whole week of it just blasting out in the sun.
Three minutes.
That kind of stuff can just be brought inside. It's, it's better. If anybody would like to grow some trees, help out with all the growing going on, we've got a, we've got some programs going on, and reach out. Thanks.
Thanks, Mr. Braga. Mayor, that's it.
Okay, that brings us to our consent agenda, which is items two through 12. Are there any items the council would like to pull, or if not, I entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Would you please vote on items two through 12? And it passes unanimously. Item number 13 is a resolution objecting to the proposed elimination of Dartbus routes 225 and 22, and 255, as, and requesting the Dart Board of Directors to reconsider and remove those routes from the list of those slated for elimination. Do I have a motion?
Motion, motion to approve.
Second. Would you please vote? And it passes unanimously. The next on our item, items are our zoning cases. So, at this time, if anyone wishes to speak on a zoning case, if you'd please stand and be sworn in by our City Secretary, Shanae Jennings.
Please stand and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that all statements which you will make tonight to the City Council of the City of Irving will be the truth and nothing but the truth? Thank you. You may be seated.
Thank you, Shanae. Item number 14 is 2025270 SFP, considering a special fence project plan for an eight-foot tall fence within the required yard setback on a reverse front lot at 715 West Tangaway Drive. Is the applicant with, with us this evening?
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is James Thomas. I'm here speaking on behalf of my friend, David Satterfield. He's a resident of 715 Tangaway Drive. He's a little hoarse today, so I thought I might come and help him out a little bit. I just wanted to throw these pictures up real quick. These are some pictures of what it's going to look like, the fence before and after. I think y'all had those earlier in a different meeting, just so you kind of have a visual of what it's going to look like. The request is for the approval of the site plan variance to allow the eight-foot board-on-board wooden fence with approximately 19 inches from the property line with a 15-foot yard setback along Ryan-
Mr. Thomas, can I ask you to pull up Mike?
Yes.
Yes, much better.
The lot sits directly faces the neighborhood, the neighbor's home at 2030 Ryan Street. If you can kind of see in the picture, there's two restroom windows and two bedroom windows that face his backyard, so it would not only include privacy for his backyard, but also for those residents that live there as well. The proposed, the proposed eight-foot height is not excessive, it's modest. It's not introducing a new fence style, it's actually just going to be the board-on-board, which already exists. It's just going to be new and updated. Has no safety or traffic issues. That was confirmed by the Traffic Department in an earlier meeting. No neighbors are in opposition. Mr. Satterfield went to all of his neighbors that were surrounding him and submitted a letter, and they all approved the fence as well. It's going to be using existing style and materials, ensuring uniformity reflects unique privacy needed due to the property's orientation, not a general zoning request. So, he sits on a corner lot, so his house is set far back from any, like, traffic obstructions or anything like that. Respectfully ask council to approve this variance, so they can move forward with the improvement that enhances privacy, safety, and property value while preserving the look and feel of the neighborhood. Like I said, there's, the pictures that were up there is just going to show, it's just going to be a more updated, new, better-looking fence on the property.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the applicant? Dennis?
I don't have any questions of the applicant, just a couple of statements. In my neighborhood, there's two of these. Matter of fact, I remember I voted on one of them, and at the time that it came to us, you know, there was some concern, you know, rightfully so, about the sight line, but, you know, it's been over so long, I don't even think, people don't even think about the sight line anymore. I think it's a definite improvement. I'm the type of person that I believe to, in trying to help people get the best use of their property, and so because of that, you know, I'll support this, this request.
So, you're going to make that the motion, Dennis?
Let me wake up here, let's see here.
You just move for approval.
Right, okay, yeah, motion for approval.
I have a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Would you please vote? I need to take the picture down so we can see the, no, that's not you, it's the... And it passes seven to one. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next, the next one is 202574ZC, considering a zoning change from R75 Single Family Residential 75 to SB 2 R75 Generalized Site Plan for Single Family Residential 75 with variances to the minimum side yard setback and maximum size of carport at 1629 Glen Valley Drive. Is the applicant with us? Good evening.
Okay, buenas tardes, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Jaime Cabral, con dirección en Glen Valley Drive, Irving, Texas. Este, yo hice una carpa, un carpo, sin tener conocimiento, que se tenía que pedir un permiso.
Do you have anybody to translate for you, mister?
I'm interpreting Jaime Cabral. He came to, he built some porch or backyard carpooling, but he's coming to attend this court to give an explanation where he didn't know, this is the first time that he's bought a house. He didn't know there was supposed to be some type of permit for, for him to build that... algo más de que lo construyan.
And by the way, y'all have 20 minutes to do this. Since you're translating for him, you get an extra 10 minutes.
La carpa la hice para mis, para mis carros, para proteger mi herramienta de trabajo. También, este, tengo cinco nietos, es donde ellos juegan, para protegerse del sol.
He had, he built it to protect some of his work stuff that he has, but also he has five grandkids that, the tensions with them too places, they didn't have any back to protect from the sun when they visit him, so it was not a bad intention to build it.
Y la verdad, pues no sabía, este, ya yo pagué un título, un, este, pagué también, este, una multa que me dieron, porque no tenía el conocimiento, no sabía que se tenía que sacar permiso, por eso pagué, ya pagué dos veces.
He's already paid two times for not knowing that he was supposed to get a permit, but he did pay some time of, I guess, agreement to $400 and $1,200 to the penalized, in other words.
Y pues quiero que tomen en cuenta, por favor, este, y si tienen que hacer algo, pues estoy en la más de posición a como, a como ustedes digan, a cómo está la ley en Irving, Texas.
First of all, he wants to respect the law here in Irving, Texas. He's been living here for the past, I say, couple of years, but he's in a good position of whatever decision y'all take for, for him to take it, I mean, considering that he didn't know that he had to get a permit, since it's not a close, like a garage or so, it's just to protect from the sun and protect from his grandkids and his work stuff that he has to use daily.
Considering the, the three feet to the side, would he be able to remove three feet from the roof so that there would be three feet between the side of the carport and the fence next door?
Si usted puede remover tres pies para que no esté en, en la, de la fence, de, de la neighbor, de la vecina.
The setback is the side of the carport?
Uh, he's, he's willing to, he can find out if, if he can get somebody to help him do it or get some type of permit to, to do it. He's in a, willing to do whatever decision y'all would, to help him out.
Why don't, why don't we get Ken down here to make sure we're all talking about the same thing here, as far as the side or the rear setback?
Yes, sir. The issue is the side setback with the, it's on the property line right now. That's one of the two variances. Normally, the requirement is three feet from the side yard setback. The other issue is the size of the structure, 730 square feet, as opposed to the normal would be required of the 400 square feet.
Can you say which direction the water is flowing off the carport?
Towards the river, but also, he was speaking earlier, that he could put some special for where the water can fall directly there, and it wouldn't bother the neighbor, so...
He could put a gutter. Okay, those are the questions, hi. Dennis?
Yeah, because I'm still confused about this, because if this is the shed roof and the water flows this way, putting a gutter on the side does nothing. That's what I'm, that's what I'm not understanding. If, if the roof sheds this way and the water flows this way, putting a gutter on the side of it is not going to catch the water. So, you don't accomplish what you're telling them you need to accomplish by pushing the water out toward the front.
No, in correction, he's saying that, sorry to, that it flows towards the river, it doesn't flow towards the, the, the direction, against the direction, it flows towards the river, in other words. against the direction, it flows towards, towards the river, in other words. And then by scooting at the three feet, it would solve against the problem with the, with the neighbor of the fence, that's one of the biggest things.
I don't think so. Ask me, is it a shed roof? Does he know what a shed roof is? Most, most patio covers like that is, is a shed roof or it's a flat roof. That one like a shed roof, which means that the roof does this. Right.
That it falls.
Water flows down off the shade of the roof, so if you take the side of it, or put a gutter on the side of it, you don't capture any water.
Okay, well, what I'm saying, he's trying to say if, if it was, that's a situation, if it was to bother the neighbor, so. He's just trying to work it out where he just have to bring it down, it's costed money, and also it's a privilege to have it for like his grandkids, that's one of the main things, protection from, especially on sunny days.
Yeah, and I understand what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to do is prevent him from having to cut part of this carport off for no purpose at all. That's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to do, because if you, if you move it over three feet, you still haven't solved your water problem.
It's not a water problem, I think, I think the neighbor is the one that's, that maybe is not, that is taking part of her fence or so. That's the biggest issue, not the water thing, but like I'm saying, he's willing to do whatever to make that, the, the neighbor comfortable, that's what I'm saying. My understanding.
I was going to just have Al kind of talk.
Ken, come on up. Señor, él va a explicar qué pasa con la agua.
Gentleman right here.
Okay, so señor, van a explicar todo sobre. Ken, I guess the, when we saw the photo, we saw, and I, I understand where Councilman Webb's coming from as to how it's shaped and, and that the water is not going to, it's going to not really flow where I think he feels that it's going to flow. And then at the same time, if it moves in, it's still not going to change it, am I right, Dennis, as to what?
Well, if Wayne was here, he could answer this question for us.
Wayne?
From, yeah, because they did pull a building permit, right?
They what?
They, they did pull a building permit.
Do they have a permit? Oh, there he is.
I'd have to verify, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head. I'd have to verify, I, I can't answer that question.
No, verify what?
Whether they pulled a permit or not.
The permit was there, or they pulled it?
I, I don't know if they did or not.
Okay.
Well, it says, it says in administrative.
Okay, I'll, I'll help them out, they have not pulled a permit, I'll, I'll work with them and.
Okay, according, according to our notes, administrative note number five, in November twenty twenty-four, let me make sure I'm on the right case, yeah. A carport permit was submitted to the inspections department, the permit was denied since the carport was encroaching into the side setback. So that sounds like they did submit a permit.
Okay, all right, now I have a better understanding. So it appears back in November, they did attempt to apply for a permit, but because it did not meet the setbacks at that time, we could not issue that permit, and I believe that's how this process began.
Did, did, did the permit actually show the design though of the actual carport itself, like whether it was a shed and which way it, it?
I'm guessing it's going to be similar to what's here, but as far as design, I could verify the pitch and what have you. Since I'm up here, if you would allow me to talk about the pitch and stuff, I'd be glad to do so. If the roof is pitching to the back, as you've suggested, the gutter would not be on the side of this carport.
Right.
It would be on the side of the carport that is lower, which may be in the back.
Right.
What we attempt to do is prevent water from draining across lots. So we prevent crosslot drainage, and we would require that guttering to go to the appropriate location. I believe in this case, it would be to the street, I'm not sure if that's a canal or a drainage canal in the back, otherwise it, it could possibly go back there.
So it's, so it's more about the, the drainage of the water instead of taking part of the side of the carport off?
Correct, and another reason for the three-foot setback isn't just to keep it a distance, it's also to maintain separation, because from a fire code perspective in the building code, if you're closer than that three feet hypothetically, that would be six feet, because it would be three feet on both properties, allowing six foot to have that separation between structures. Whenever you build so close to the property line, it requires higher fire ratings due to closeness of buildings at that point, so that's part of the reasoning what the three-foot setback is there for.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that they understand that we all were on the same page, because, you know, everybody was saying put the gutter on the side.
Yeah.
But that, that's, that's not.
It's a moot point being on the side.
Okay.
Well, we'll work with them as far as the permitting side on that.
You had a, you had a comment?
I did, and you, you touched on some of the question, question I had, which was which direction should the water flow? And you said probably to the front, but you're not sure about that.
Correct.
Yes, and then the three feet, and you answered that question too, which is that it's not just for room for the gutter, it's for other fire code reasons and just aesthetics too, I think, of enough separation from the, the carport or the shed or whatever it is to the next property line.
Yes.
So it sounds like that it's premature for us to be considering the case at this point. Because we talked about the side yard setback, the permit was denied for that, we never even talked about direction flow and then actually having the water flow to the front, and then also just the fact that the three feet is needed, not just for a gutter.
Now, if I, if I understand correctly, the case in front of you tonight is in regards to the setbacks. Once they came in for permitting, we would address those concerns during permitting.
Okay.
Those are not variances that you can apply for, I think this is solely a setback in size, yes.
I get that, but they also go hand in hand, because if, if they're going to have to change the roof to change the slope, then that also like speaks to whether or not they should move the roof to allow for three feet separation to the side. So, I mean, so I think that we're, like Dennis's comments were along the lines of, there's enough, you don't need to worry about the gutter, so you don't worry about the three feet, but it's more complicated than that.
Yes, yes, sir, to use my famous quote, it depends.
So, and I think all of us here want to help them, but we don't, we don't want to just like, they'll say, okay, fine, it's just fine the way it is, and they go to submit the permit, it's like, well, you got to change the roof anyway.
Yeah.
So I think it'd be better to have it all considered at once, to make sure that we don't just like have them still have a problem later on.
Al?
Yeah, thank you, mayor. I guess what I'm sensing is if they would be willing to postpone and they give the time for, for you all to help them get through this process, I think we'd, we'd really like to see if we can get that done. Si puede permitir para posponer? Okay, está acuerdo? Está bien, okay, then I, no, no, espérate, espérate, no estás terminado. I'd like to move for postponement for, I guess I would like to do it for a date certain, is there a thought from you, Ken?
I believe, Shanae, correct me, if it's December eleventh?
I'm sorry?
November sixth is the next one, but.
I'm sorry, November sixth.
I think we ought to move, we need to move it later, December. I would like to postpone this item twenty twenty-five seven four dash Z C to December eleventh.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, would you please vote? And it passes unanimously, so staff will work with you on the setbacks and, and, thank you. Okay, item number sixteen is two zero two five one eight three Z C, and the applicant is asked that this be postponed till the November sixth, I had to entertain a motion on that.
So moved.
We have a motion in a second, would you please vote? And it passes unanimously.
Were you here to speak on the item, sir?
Yeah, go ahead, I apologize that they.
Nobody signed up. For sixteen?
Yeah.
Nobody signed up.
So we don't have anybody sign up?
Seventeen, yes. It's up to the mayor, nobody signed up.
Yeah, as long as you're here, we can give you three minutes to, to speak on it, but the, the case has been, is going to be postponed. But you can come speak. Until November sixth.
But please sign up in the future, ahead of time.
We need to make sure that you sign up before seven o'clock.
It doesn't work that way, you have to sign up in person. I don't know where you signed up, but.
They're willing to wait, though.
Well, you just have to, you have to come here and sign up, so, before seven, from six to seven.
So on the, on the November sixth, if you hear about ten to seven, you can sign up there and they'll make sure that we, that you can speak on the item, okay? Are you have any other questions?
So they scheduled us for this city council, for number sixteen, they're saying, I guess we're going to use this to, to sign up.
So basically what happens was we advertised this, but the applicant has decided to postpone it because he's bringing more information back to us, so we're postponing it tonight till the sixteenth, and then if you want to come back and, six, six. Yes, sir. Thank you. Sixteenth of November is my birthday, so I keep coming up with the sixteenth. We'll go to item number seventeen, considering his only change to CC, community commercial, to SP one, CC detailed site plan, community commercial with the variances to the minimum car parking, minimum drive aisles width at five twelve North Sowers Road. We have the applicant with us, good evening.
Good evening, I'm going to be speaking on behalf of the applicant, my name is Priscilla V. Glanthet, address is eighteen oh two Green Oaks Drive, Irving, Texas, and this is Yessenia Mahia, she is the applicant and the property owner. Okay, council, thank you so much for your evening, for your time this evening, we're going to be talking about five twelve North Sowers Road, Irving, Texas, Ashley Beauty Salon. I just want to give you some history about the property and also of the business that is hoping to operate here. And so Ashley Beauty Salon has been in Irving for the last eighteen years, Ms. Mahia lives in Irving, she's raised her family in Irving, and she has given back to the community throughout the last eighteen years. Her lease at her previous location was not going to be up for renewal, so she decided she wanted to buy a property here in Irving where she's been operating, and so that's how we came to five twelve North Sowers Road. This process has been going on since last November, she's been going through the permitting process, and now we are here because she's needing a zoning change with two variances. Permits have been pulled, and she has actually poured her heart and soul and her money into this property to take a once decaying building and now has brought it back to life. She, you can see the list of renovations, new roof, flooring, HVAC, electrical, plumbing, windows, paint. She has really done a wonderful job in taking this building that, as you can see at the top, was just vacant, empty, and really an eyesore in that part of town. Some of the before and after photos of the actual property, the before photo, that is actually what it looked like when she purchased it, and now the after photo, like I said, she's put a lot of investment into this property. And so we're here, she's, she's wanting to rezone to, it's currently community commercial, she is seeking to rezone to detailed site plan, community commercial with two variances for parking and then also with the driveway aisle width. So we are here today, hopefully with your approval for these two variances, so she can continue the process to hopefully open her beauty salon.
Questions? David, or Al? David was on and off.
Go ahead, David, are you on? Priscilla, would the young lady?
Hi.
Make a statement in Spanish, so at least we know that she's here and that, because I don't think you're representing her as a person that's a paid representative, Emily.
No, she's my neighbor, we live three houses down.
I understand, that's why I want to do it this way.
Or in English if you want, I can, I speak English too.
Well.
I'm speaking English too.
I'm impressed.
Yes.
What do you need her for?
Thank you. Yeah, my name is Yessenia, I'm living in five hundred Colony Court.
Okay, we're good, boy, that, you slid, you slid that one in us. I'm good.
Okay, David?
Motion to approve.
I want, I get ahead of it sometimes, and it passes unanimously. Okay.
Okay, thank you so much.
The next item is two zero two five two one six Z C, considering his only change from HCD CMU, Heritage Crossing District Corridor Mixed Use to SP one HCD CMU Detailed Site Plan, Heritage Crossing District Corridor Mixed Use with variances to the Heritage Crossing District District Standards, including but not limited to primary building orientation and entrance design, drive-through location, and percentage of the lot frontage and required screening at four hundred West Irving Boulevard. The applicant with us this evening?
No, yep, nobody's signed up. Yeah, you can come up.
Is there anyone out that did sign up?
Hello, my name's Judy Langford, I'm with CSO Architects, and I live in Capel at seven seven six South Capel Road. Don't know what to do. I'm here to answer questions, I was asked, I'm not the architect of record, I work with the company, so I came to answer questions. I didn't know I needed to present, but I can certainly do that if you need me to walk you through it.
Mark, you have questions?
We, we talked about this at the work session, I think we do have some questions. So one thing that has come up about the orientation of the building, that it's oriented to the west, to the parking lot, and I think the understanding of that is because there's a limited number of prototypes that Long John Silver's has.
Yeah.
And so that's a, that's a significant concern, so if you could speak to that about.
Well, and I don't, I'm not very familiar with the Long John Silver's prototypes, but I do understand prototype architecture and the, the cost impact, and what they're striving to do is just, it's to demolish, y'all know this Long John Silver's is right on the road, they want to demolish that and put a nice new building there. And the way that they want to, to orient the front of the building does meet the prototype, the prototypes that they have, but they also want to keep the parking to this, to the portion of the, of the site where they've got it and keep the, the drive-through facing the streets for the reason of how, they have a lot of drive-through business, and they want the customers to be able to see what's happening and not have, also for the, the pedestrian traffic when they're, if they, if that was, excuse me, if that was the parking lot, they'd be walking through the parking lot, and it's a little bit dangerous, and they would rather have the pedestrians kind of go around and keep, and keep that off of, keep them from walking through that drive-through area and through a parking, sorry, through the parking area if it was up against the street. Does that make sense? Am I saying clearly?
Because, yeah, I, I think I get, get an idea of what you're saying, so I think that, but the orientation matters a lot, and, and there's restrictions, I guess, as far as what you can do based upon the size of the lot.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I think that, I think there might be other possible solutions to, to the, to the property if further discussions were to be had.
Yeah.
With the city, and so I, I'd like to see those efforts be undertaken, and so would, would your, would your client be open to a postponement?
Yes.
For those, okay, so... If somebody else wants to say something, I'll make a motion to continue?
No, no, I, I agree, because we want to work with you on this project.
Yeah.
We'd like you to tear down that building too and build a nice brand-new one.
Yeah.
So we want to make sure we get everything right with the city and...
Okay.
And the planning.
And so what we can do, if we postpone, then we'll go back through the process of just talking with you about some of the points that are, that maybe we can address and, and come to, you know, maybe not all four of these.
Yes.
But as many as we could, and, and try to get a little bit better presence on the, the main thoroughfares is what you're looking for.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
And I'm very happy to see that, you know, you want to build a new building over there, and that's going to be an improvement over there, so I think we all like that idea, just talking through some of these other things about the way it's, it's going to be situated in that.
Okay.
So I think, sorry, Al.
Yeah, I just want you to know that we want to try to work with this, because what we saw was two different depictions, one that you were putting forward and one that our people, so we want to give you time to be able to come back with what you really want to try to do, because there's some obvious keys, I guess I want to say, roads that are really kind of putting you in a position, but it's a very important location, so we've talked about it, you probably, I don't know if you were there at our...
I wasn't, I wasn't.
Well, now you know why we're, we're suggesting it.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, well, I'm encouraged, thank you. Okay.
Mayor? Mayor, I got one question.
Sure.
Have you seen the staff's rendering of a workable, what they showed us today?
I saw it, and...
You have any comments on it?
Yeah, well, one thing is though, the drive-through would have the, the access to the drive-through on the passenger side of the car, so that's not ideal. And so, that's, that's, this one's shaking his head behind you. Okay, well, then we, we're misunderstanding it, and I, and I have to apologize, they, they sent me here because I live here and, and I'm new to this project, so I, but whenever, at first glance, there wasn't a lot of circulation on that particular, on the city's site, but I'm willing to, to work with you guys.
Yeah, I just want to know if you saw it?
Yeah.
They gave a rendering, I suggested rendering, so, good, yeah, we, we want to work with you to get it done.
Okay.
Okay.
Mayor, I just wanted to let you know. Congressman Webb was trying to say what I was trying to say also, but we're telling you, bring it back.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
So you want to postpone?
What day?
I'd like to make a motion to postpone to November sixth.
Well, just a minute, Ken's got something.
We might want this to be on, just because of the tight calendar, might want this to be to December eleventh.
Can I withdraw my motion, Kayla?
I think you can amend, and as long as the person that seconded it is okay with it.
All right, I'd like to amend my motion to continue to December, what?
Eleven.
Eleven.
Yeah, second.
Okay, we have a motion for postponement till December, please vote. And it passed unanimously. Item number nineteen is two zero two five, two four three Z C, considering it's only changed from R six, Single Family Residential six, to S P two, R six, Generalized Site Plan, Single Family Residence six, with variances to the side yard setback for accessory structure at twenty seven thirteen Douglas Avenue. Is the applicant with us this evening? Shanae, do we have anyone else signed up on this?
No, just Mr. Contreras.
Good evening. Good evening, City Council, my name's Obed Contreras, I am the applicant, and speaking on behalf of my dad who's here with me, Juan Contreras, he's the owner of the property. Basically, just to give you some, some, I guess, history of, of what happened here, the situation, my mom and my dad, they have had their house, it was a smaller house, and they decided to demolish it and basically rebuild a new one that's going to be for the retirement home. The existing property at the time had a shed already on the back, and it was much bigger, but since the architect, the builder that they were working with designed a house, and in order to fit it within the property, because it comes out at an angle, they had to push the house, the new house that was built, a little bit more back into the backyard. So with this, they got permits for demolition, and also for the shed as well, that was existing, they made it smaller, and just pushed it. My dad at the moment thought that because they already had permits to demolish the previous structure that was there, and then to rebuild, that he probably didn't have to get, you know, another permit for that other smaller shed that's in question now. So the situation is, it looks like a city inspector told me somebody, I guess, tried to do the same thing or something, I don't know, and they were told, hey, there's no permits for this, when we tried to apply for the permit, we're being told, like, hey, there is a zone there that I guess you're encroaching, and we wanted to make sure with Encore, we already did that, made sure that with Encore, there's no issues as far as like the power lines, there's enough clearance, so we're just here asking, hopefully to allow for him to keep it as is, just the reason being, like I said, the house, the new, new house got pushed back, and it's very hard to get any machinery or anything like that to lift that shed and, and move it, and it will also be making his backyard space smaller, so I'll ask for your consideration and any questions that you might have.
David?
Motion to approve.
I just, I want to, one question. Where the... Where the... Yeah, Ken. Ken, is this a two-step? If we approve this, then we have to then come back and abandon the, the right-of-way?
You mean the, is this for the utility easement?
Yeah.
Yeah, once this is, if this is approved, then the next step is to work with C I P with a license to encroach. It would, it would not go through, through y'all, it would be just us.
We don't have to.
Yeah.
It's all dealt with internally.
This is the only public action that you have.
Okay, it's done internally.
Just mentioning that C I P has already given us a note, their blessing as well for this.
Great. We have a motion and a second, is there any other further discussion? Please vote. It passed unanimously.
Thank you, appreciate you.
Number twenty is twenty twenty five, two eighty two Z C, considering it's only changed from R six, Single Family Residence six, to S P two, R six, Generalized Site Plan, Single Family Residential six, with the variances to allow covered patio to encroach into the front yard setback at ninety two two East Fifth Street. Applicants with us this evening? Good evening.
Hi, my name is Brian Lopez.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Anayeli Lopez.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Maurilio Lopez.
We live at ninety two East Fifth Street, we are here about our porch that we built. We came to the city of Irving to ask for a permit to do our roofing, and as, as we proceeded with the roofing status, we saw that there was parts of the roof where the roof slanted in, and then went flat, and that part started rotting away the wood, I have a picture of that, give me a second. The wood, the wood started running away, and so we proceeded to do that little, the porch in a little angle, so the water won't get stuck there and won't continue rotting our, our roof.
Yeah, you can just put it down on the, right there, and they'll have it come up for you. Thank you.
And as you can see, that piece is completely, completely rotten, and that's how it looks. As you can tell, there, it is a flat piece of roof on the bottom side, there, let me see. As you can tell, the roof slants down, and then it goes straight, and that's where the corner, that corner was where it started rotting away, and... And we're just here to ask, any questions that I may have?
No, I appreciate the, the video, it kind of showed us how the roof was, where the challenges were. Are there any questions of the applicant from the, from the council? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second for approval, would you please vote? We'll have to get our screen back, and it passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number twenty twenty five, three oh nine Z C, considering it's only changed from R six, Single Family Residential six, to S P two, R six, Generalized Site Plan, Single Family Residential six, with the variance to allow a carport to encroach in the front yard setback at four twelve Elaine Drive. Is the applicant with us? Good evening.
Good evening, I'm Mary Ann Hampton, and I live at four twelve Elaine Drive, and I, the planning and zoning, I feel like, on this, kind of thought that the carport that I was trying to build might be a little much for the neighborhood, is what I kind of gathered, they didn't actually say that, but that's what I gathered by their questions. I've been assured by the contractor that I have hired, that when they build it, that it will look as though the house was built that, was built with a carport, that it, it's not going to be anything outstanding. Plus the fact that I want to protect my car, I have a tree that limbs are falling on my car, my new car, and just, I just would like the carport be easier to get in, and now when, when it's raining, we won't get all soaking wet to get to our house, and I feel like I should have done it years ago, to be quite honest, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions of the applicant?
Motion to approve.
I have a comment.
Sure.
So the, the request is made because she wants a carport, I understand that, and, and the reasons for that, the standard is whether there's a hardship, and I don't see that a hardship is being presented, I see that you want a carport and believe that our ordinances should allow for it, but there's not anything exceptional about your circumstance, so for that reason, I'm opposed to the case.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Would you please vote? And it passes five to three.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is two zero two five, three eleven Z C, considering it's only changed from P U D two to Planned Urban Development two, Community Commercial to P U D two to S P one, R A B, Planned Urban Development two, Detailed Site Plan for a restaurant with attendant accessory uses for the sale of alcoholic beverages for on-premise consumption, and C C, Community Commercial uses at six sixty Walnut Ridge Drive. The applicant with us this evening?
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening, City Council, and good evening, staff and everyone present here. My name is Ravi Godia, residing in one thousand five Thorncliff Trail, Irving, seven five zero six three. I am the owner of the property, and I'm here to present my case. Go back to, this case is pretty simple, going back to two thousand six, there was a Bennigan's over here, and the city had respectfully granted us a few variances. One was the, one of them was with the parking variance, and of course, we also had the S P one R A B to serve alcohol. Two thousand nineteen, the building got fire, we wanted to redevelop it into an office building, the city requested us and asked us, hey, please repeal it if you're not going to be using R A B for alcohol, which we repealed, and we took it off. Fast forward now, we rebuilt it to a restaurant with up to six different users, and we are zoning it, or we are requesting for rezoning to serve alcohol with a few parking variances. So, back in two thousand six, we already had a parking variance, typically for a restaurant, you'll offer us, one parking equals to two point five seats. You all had, granted us one parking for two point eight five seats, we're asking for the same thing again. Please feel free to ask me any questions you have, because this is really critical for the business. I'm here to answer any questions you have.
Mayor, we do have somebody signed up?
We have somebody, others wishing to speak?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we've got some others wishing to speak, so if you would, we'll let them speak, and then we'll give you time to speak after they did as well.
Rahama, Rohana Choudhury? And this is it?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Rohana Choudhury, I'm the general manager for the Hyatt Place Dallas Last Cleaners, it's just behind the building for, for Mr. Ravi's building, and we have been, we have been in this business from nineteen eighty, nineteen ninety-seven, and we do have a different hotels, and this hotel was, we used to sell, we used to sell this liquor in when it was a Mary Sweets, and that was in nineteen ninety-seven. And then two thousand, we got it, Hyatt Place Dallas Last Cleaners, and then we have been serving food and liquor. So with this, if they open a restaurant and the liquor, it was going to really affect our business, and, and the reason for this, I am opposing because of the restaurant and the economy going on, it is really going to lose, we are going to lose a lot of revenue on it. And they did have a restaurant, like when it got fired, fired, but when I did ask Mr. Ravi, when there was a construction going on, I did ask him, so can you explain me, please, like, what are we building? And he did mention that he's opening office buildings, and there will be a small, not a restaurant, like a coffee shops and snacks, and suddenly out of the blue, we just, we just got this part, that they're opening a bar and a liquor. So that's why we are opposing on this one, because it is going to affect our business a lot.
Any questions of Dennis?
Yeah, I got one question, so your business is inside the hotel?
Yes, sir.
What percentage of your patrons will not be staying at your hotel, they'll be using it restaurant, do you know?
We are pretty much ninety-nine percent busy, and then we, if we, they are staying at the hotel, and if we are serving liquor and food in the restaurant, they will be going out to their restaurant, so definitely it's going to affect our revenue also.
Okay.
That, that is a really major thing, and so that's why we are just opposing it.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
No, I think we're fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
You mentioned that there could be up to six...
Up to six spaces over there, so if I may speak, continue?
Yes, oh yeah, please, that's all I...
So, we are in less than, less than half a, half a mile, or quarter of a mile, we have close to ten hotels with approximately thirteen hundred and seventy-four rooms, and these, most of these hotels are limited service hotels, they don't offer food. So going back to two thousand six, this is exactly what we presented to the city and the city council, and we said that most of this is foot traffic. People come in from different countries, different states, different cities, they stay in these hotels, the last thing they want to do is be in their room, they want to come out, get a feel of the whole, you know, the restaurant, and come and dine, and go back to bed. So that is the reason we are asking for the variance for two point eight five seats, just a little bit more, which you all had already granted us in two thousand six. Coming back to Hyatt Place, we've been there from two thousand six to two thousand nineteen, they never had an issue, and again, why would all their customers, or even other customers, or other guests from... And again, why would all their customers or even other customers or other guests from other hotels go to them? I don't see that. I just don't see that. They have the right to say what they want and think what they want. I'm not going to stop them from that. But please ask me questions.
Yeah, and I was just looking at the floor plan, there's six potential spaces within this?
Yes.
And so there could be six different restaurants or six different cuisines requiring alcohol?
No, no. So what has happened now is the city allows us to zone the entire space for RAB. We are not saying that there'll be six restaurants serving alcohol or four restaurants serving alcohol. We are just going for the zoning for the RAB. We're making it easier for us to lease any space out and say, yes, you don't have to go through this whole rigmarole again and you have the option of having the RAB. But yes, they will have to go through the TABC verification.
Okay.
They have to go through the TABC verification. All the city, all we will tell, or the city is saying is, yeah, okay, on this property, you are able to serve alcohol, but with the permissions and permits of TABC and the city. This is just step number one.
So what do you envision to go into the six spaces?
I've already got three tenants lined up. One of them is a national chain, a Poké and a Boba Bar. It's called Poké Moto. One is a Tibetan restaurant. They're from Tibet. They don't have a new, they don't have a Tibetan restaurant in Texas. So one is that space. The other one is a Indian restaurant. It's a specific part of India, South India. So what we're trying to do is get different cuisines from different parts of the world and let everybody, but will they serve liquor or alcohol? I don't know. But all we're saying is please allow us to have that.
So potentially openings for six restaurants?
Yes.
And whether they'll serve alcohol or not?
That's up to them.
Be up to them?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I was trying to get at is?
Sorry.
How we went from one restaurant to potentially six restaurants? And that's, that was what I was trying to get straight in my mind. Al.
Ken. I guess during our work session and the discussion, as I understood it, that getting the RAB for his site is one thing, but then there's going to be as many as other, up to five or six other sublets that could be restaurants? Question is, is there a process where they then automatically are able to serve alcohol because of his position, because he's the owner? And the other locations can go ahead without submitting to then be able to serve? So that I understand what's going on.
The zoning would be, for the RAB would then be in place. They would still have to go through the whole TABC verification process where they submit the application, we have to sign, we have to review it, we have to sign off, city secretary has to sign off, state has to approve it. That whole process would still have to go. In addition, each individual establishment would be responsible for meeting their 40/60. They, even though it's, you know, six spaces, up to six spaces in one building, they couldn't aggregate that like the Music Factory. They would have to each individually be responsible for meeting that 40/60 requirement.
Thank you for it. Okay, thank you. And that's, you know, I kind of went around the barn the wrong way. What I was trying to figure out was originally there was one restaurant there and we'd given variances for parking. Now we're going to have potentially six restaurants and we're going to be given variances for parking. So that's, that's where I was trying to get my heads, my arms around, you know, potentially where we're at with that many restaurants coming and going, if, and then a reduction in parking.
So if I may speak? We cannot increase parking. These restaurants are so confined in this, confined in this space. For example, let me give you the example of the Poké and Boba restaurant. There are only seven seats in that restaurant.
But if seven people came, you've got seven parking lots, spots.
Depends. If, that's, that's why the city says we'll give you 2.5 seats per parking. And because we are having so much of foot traffic, we are confident, because in the last 15 years, since you all have given us the variance, we have never, ever troubled the city, traffic, police with the parking. Never. Not one complaint saying that, oh, we are having an issue. So as I was even telling to the Planning and Zoning Commission, if you come in in the evening, you'll see the parking lot empty or half-empty. But people are walking, the foot traffic from the hotels are coming over there and giving the business. So that's the reason is, what we are asking is for seats. Just allow us to have extra seating. That's it. And we have a 3,000 square foot patio over there. That's why we call it kitchens at the courtyard. So that 3,000 square foot patio is going to seat 23 additional seats than what the city allows us. The city allows us now is 125 seats for 50 parking spaces. All we're asking is if you can just give us what you all had given us in 2006 is 143 parking spaces.
143.
143 parking spaces. So we're asking about 20 parking spaces extra. Not, not parking spaces, sorry, seats. I'm so sorry.
The, for the ratio he's proposing, 50 parking spaces would be 143 seats, to put it succinctly. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, John?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so I just, I just did the reverse math here real quick. And so you're short, assuming you have 143 seats, you're short eight spaces.
Yes.
But also, we don't calculate the seating until you have a tenant.
Correct.
So there's no, I mean, there's no knowing whether you will even need 140, or will even have 143 seating, seats.
Not in the restaurants, not in the dining rooms, you will not, because these are confined restaurants, small restaurants. So because we have a large patio, we're asking that those seats could be used on the patio.
Right. In a lot of, in a lot of parts of the city, I would be, for eight spaces, I would be pretty willing to fudge, fudge on that variance and say, yeah, sure. This area, there is not a lot nearby where you can have, if you, if you have a lot of cars come in, if you have more cars than you have spots for, there's not, there isn't anywhere else near, I mean, this isn't near a neighborhood, you can't park on the street. This is right by a highway. So if people come here and there's no parking on your property, they're going to park in one of the nearby businesses, probably the hotel.
And that is the reason, if I can just show what I've got over here to tell you about the hotels, because it's not just speaking about the hotels. I have a hand-drawn map over here showing you that where these hotels are and.
Can I project that?
So these are just nine hotels. It's 1,374 rooms. We are the charcoal gray box over there, the rectangular box. Hyatt Place has only close to 120 rooms. Then we have Fairfield Inn, Elaine.
Ravi, can you speak into the mic?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, so we have all these, and this is all walking distance. We assure you, we've got, it's, it's just, in the past, we had all these, the same thing. And we're asking you, can you please give us the same thing? Nothing different are we asking. So we get some more seats. This way we have, we can serve more customers. If you look at the building, can, can you all show the appearance of the building, the elevation on this? Is it possible or?
Yeah, we added on that today.
Can you, can you also point out the, the ones that don't have food or restaurants?
Don't you don't have food? Comfort Inn, Hampton Inn?
Yeah, there's, sorry. Here, we can give it to you.
So to the best of my knowledge, the only one that has food is Hyatt Place. They have food and wine. The other ones are all limited service hotels. They will only, they only serve breakfast. And Ms. Rihanna, you're welcome to correct me if I'm wrong. So all these are limited service hotels. I actually used to work at the Hyatt Place. Before that, it used to be the Amerisuit's. I used to work for that hotel, for that group. It was prime hospitality. And customers used to ask, where do we go? Where do we go to dine? Where do we go to? It was only Benihana or across the street. That's when we bought this land and we did a Bennigan's. We were so happy, the customers, the hotel guests, they were all happy. All they had to do is just walk. Like I, like I explained myself is, the parking lot looked empty, restaurant was sufficiently busy. And we made a decent income out of that. And we never troubled the city, the city traffic, no one was troubled. So once again, we are not asking for parking. We are requesting you all is based on the stats over here and the fact, this is going to be foot traffic. And that is the reason we're asking you all to please, if you can give us what you all had given us in 2006, 2.85.
What's the walk, how many, two, three minutes from these hotels?
Two, three minutes?
I don't know what I.
Yeah, yeah, less than five minutes.
And about 1,200 rooms around there?
Yes, 1,374 rooms.
1,374? Okay, thank you.
Yes, yes. Now, if someone takes seven minutes, don't blame me for that. But, but yes, it is within five minutes walking distance.
I'll give you two. Al?
Yeah, so I think I know exactly what you're doing. So you're really providing, in a different language, a smogger's bar of restaurants.
Yes.
Rather than Tibetan, et cetera, et cetera.
Yes.
So you're really putting out an ability to kind of bring people in to be able to pick and choose what they want to eat that evening, where country they want to, you know, savor. And I understand what the young lady is concerned about because that's going to impact her, her business because people are going to want to probably walk and they can walk there and all. So I guess that's what you're trying to get done. Am I correct?
I am not trying to take her business away.
No, 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 I did not imply that.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't, I am not interested in taking her business away. What we're trying to do is, if we start thinking this way, we'll never start giving people other restaurants to open close to another restaurant.
I got it.
And no disrespect, I did not mean it in that.
No, no. All I was asking was a very simple question. So I think you've answered it.
Yeah.
But I understand, I wanted the lady to understand, we understand why you're here.
Let me give you, if I may, I'm so sorry you were speaking.
That's all right, go ahead.
Let me give you the, rendering the front elevation of this building, if you allow me to show.
Good.
It is, it is a very attractive building, which we take pride and joy in the city of Irving. You are, you're also going to love it.
By the way, this kind of food fair is a good idea. So I understand what you're doing. I miss Bennigan's, but so be it.
I don't either. Our business. Is that?
John.
I can't control that glare. But that is what it is. We're proud, proud to say that this is a Texas-themed building. If you see, we've got the map of Texas, you've got the blue bonnets over here, over here. You've got the entrance over here. It's the people are hard and that's the lawn. Very impressive building, not, not because it's ours, but because it's proudly located in Irving.
So I really, I really appreciate what it is you're trying to do.
Okay.
You know, I think the concept is good. I, I'm really having trouble with the parking variance, though. I got to be honest. I'm not sure I can see a way to supporting this with the parking variance included, but I could do it without it. Is that something you'd be open to?
I don't have a choice. I'll, I'll take it. Honestly speaking, sir, all, I said enough. I think I, I don't have anything else to say. I, I was only asking for what was given to me in the past and please let me have it. But if you feel you don't want me to have it, nothing has changed. Nothing has changed from 2006 to now.
We got David and then Mark.
Yeah, John, just, I know the area very well, the hotels there, there are 1,374 rooms and very limited options to, unless you're going to go drive around. And it's not a super restaurant destination. It's tough to find these restaurants. I know how many restaurants have closed along that strip because it's tough to find. And I feel for the Hyatt Place, I understand, but you, you look at that area and it's, it's a much-needed-to-have walking from all those hotels. There is a lot of rooms right there with very limited options for lunch or dinner. And that's why I'm supportive of your idea and the concept of what's going on there.
Mark?
Yeah, I'm supportive of the case, too. I appreciate the investment and with the, all the hotel rooms there around, I think that is a different circumstance that warrants some accommodation to the parking. And it's, it's a difficult intersection there, too, location for a lot of the cars coming in. So I do see it as focused on the hotel guests around in that area. I do hope you get people driving in as well. I mean, I think that's a great idea with the different types of cuisines from around the world, especially the eastern type of cuisine you're talking about. It's an interesting idea and I hope it takes off. And so I, I think it's, I like the idea and I'm fully supportive.
Thank you. Okay, no further questions? I'd entertain a motion.
Tell move.
Mayor, just, just as a reminder, this item has opposition over 20%, so it will require seven votes for approval.
Again, to clarify, the motion is for both variances, right? Yep, okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Would you please vote? So then it?
It doesn't pass. It fails.
Correct.
That motion fails.
Can you do a motion to amend the, what John was talking about? Was it the variance for that?
You can try.
You can do a new motion.
So we, but that, that didn't?
This fails, yeah. This, right. You're free to make another motion.
I move to pass without the variance to the required number of parking spaces.
We have a motion and a second. Would you please vote?
Hold on one, please. One second, please, Council. He's resetting the system.
Yes.
Okay.
Fernando, could you just know when you're ready?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead and vote. And it passes six to two.
It fails.
It does not. You need seven because it's a super majority.
So it fails.
So I have, can I, can I ask a question?
Sure.
So that means I cannot even have alcohol served over there, it looks like? That means I will not have tenants.
That's where we are right now.
Can we postpone this for next month or?
We already voted.
We can make a motion to reconsider.
Okay, you want to do that?
You can do a motion to reconsider, but it needs to be the, those that voted for the item.
It still fails, though. It'll still fail.
So I voted.
It'll still fail, though.
We were still the majority. We didn't get the super.
Right, the, the.
Right.
For the motion, those of us who got the grain, we can actually make the motion reconsider.
Correct. Correct.
But we will always need a super majority, as long as there are suppositions.
Counsel, if we can have you please speak in your microphone, so we're making sure that we're recording it. Thank you.
But Mr. Canos, we need you to vote with us, so we can not ruin these opportunities.
I have a question. Sure. Is there a way to, like, have that motion to reconsider at our next meeting? No, it's got to be now. Yeah, we got to decide now.
It'll be six months.
Okay.
So, question for the parliamentarian. Does the motion to reconsider require a super majority?
No, it does not. It just requires a simple majority. You need a super majority to be able to approve the item. We'll need a simple majority to reconsider the item first, and then we'll take up a new motion.
Does the motion to postpone require a super majority?
No, it does not.
Okay.
Okay, everybody got it straight? So if we want to make a motion to reconsider?
I make a motion to reconsider.
We have a motion to reconsider. And the reconsidering motion passes.
And just so we have it for the record, who made the motion and who seconded it?
John and then Al.
No, I didn't make the motion.
No, Zaponta made the motion.
Zaponta made the motion? Okay.
Dennis seconded it.
Dennis seconded, thank you.
Thank you.
I move to postpone to November 6th.
Second. So a motion to postpone?
I got a question.
Sure.
Why are we postponing this?
Because we only have eight people, and it takes a super majority.
Okay.
Simple majority.
Simple majority, Dennis, on this. Oh, I understand that. I'm just saying, if we got, you know, if we got to have a super majority today, we got to have a super majority at the next, the next time we do this, and, you know...
Does somebody second the question?
He seconded. We made a, we have a motion, a second, to postpone till the 6th. You go ahead and vote. Postponing till the 6th, when we have a full council. And it passes. So it will be postponed till the 6th, when we have a full council.
Thank you. Thank you very much for considering that.
We've got two guys up here.
New motion to postpone.
Okay.
For the record, Mayor, can I ask who motion to postpone?
Motion to postpone, and...
Thank you.
The last item on our agenda is 2025312ZZ. Considering a zoning change from R6, single-family residential 6, to SP2, R6, generally site plan, single-family residence 6, with the variance to the side yard building setback at 2828 Winslow Street. Is the applicant with us?
I'm here.
Okay.
I know, but I can ask any questions if you can.
Sure. We had a good discussion on this today, and...
Yeah. Motion for approval.
We have a motion, a second. Would you please vote?
This is...
And it passes unanimously. Thank you for your patience. And that brings us to the end of our agenda. We're out by nine.